We are in session for our regular council meeting for January 16th, and it is approximately 6:00 PM. Can we get roll call, please? Mayor Didball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Thank you. And tonight, we're going to have the invocation led by Councilmember Buckland, and we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Girl Scouts tonight.
I feel bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council will be of benefit to those who live and work in our great community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a couple of presentations and proclamations. We're going to start with proclamation for Katya Townsend, Capitol Director for Assemblyman James Gallagher. So Curtis, are you coming up? Hi. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I would like to welcome Katya Townsend of Assemblyman Gallagher's office. We are presenting this proclamation to Ms. Townsend to express our appreciation for her work and diligence in moving forward legislation benefiting Yuba City. Katya began working in the State Assembly in 2011 and became the Capitol Director of Assemblymember Gallagher's office in 2014. During her time with Assemblymember Gallagher as the Capitol Director, they had 16 bills signed by the governor. Here are just a few that benefited the city of Yuba City. AB 255, which was regarding the release of the sexually violent predators. AB 1270 regarding regular inspection schedules of California's dams and reservoirs and setting standards for what must be done during the inspections. AB 2063 regarding career technical education and budget requests that help the ongoing funding for levy maintenance. Ms. Townsend drafted the AB 810 that would have allowed Yuba City and Yuba and Sutter Counties to retain funds for the sale of properties that California Department of Transportation acquired to build a third bridge crossing over the Feather River. While the bill successfully made it to the legislative process, it ultimately did not receive the support from Governor Jerry Brown. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Didball, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby congratulate Katya Townsend for all of her hard work and on these bills directly influencing the city of Yuba City. Thank you. Say anything? Okay.
Lot of work.
I think it's your turn. You're in the hot seat. So this is current Councilmember Sean Harris, who is actually now retired from our California Highway Patrol as well, as our captain. So in honor of your retirement, we want to celebrate and give you this proclamation. So Captain Harris is a fourth-generation Yuba City resident and graduate of Yuba City High School. Go Honkers!
Very Christian.
Really? Well, still, go Honkers! I'm not taking that back. He earned an associate.
Do you? Yeah, I'll write it down.
Is it wrong in there? Need your glasses. Yeah, you're not going to get anywhere with reading that. He earned his Associate Degree in Administration of Justice from Yuba Community College in 1987, and a Bachelor's Degree from California State University of Sacramento in 1993. Graduated from the CHP Academy in April of 1995, and went to receive a Master's of Science Degree in Criminal Justice Administration and Security from the University of Phoenix in 2007. Okay. Like, oh, God. Just the look you gave, I wasn't sure. Okay, in 1997, he was assigned to the CHP Office of Capitol Services in Sacramento, and was subsequently assigned to the Governor's Protective Detail, in which capacity he provided security services for California Governors Pete Wilson and Gray Davis. Over the course of 14 years and seven months, Captain Harris served in various CHP areas that covered all parts of the northern California counties, reaching from the Pacific Ocean to Sierra Nevadas. Captain Harris also holds multiple post certifications, and in 2016, had the time and energy to commit himself to run and be elected as our Yuba City Council. Captain Sean Harris's 31-year career focused on public safety that encompassed working in law enforcement for more than 26 years. Now be it resolved that I, Mayor Didball, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby take the great pleasure in commending and thanking Captain Sean Harris, the California Highway Patrol, for his unwavering and exemplary service to the people of the state of California, and to extend him a very sincere best wishes on his retirement and for the success of the ongoing public service in Yuba City.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, you guys. I really appreciate it. Definitely not necessary. It's been kind of a whirlwind thing since the retirement date, but it's been my pleasure to give so many years. It's amazing how fast they go and the opportunities you take along the way and the lessons you learn along the way. But basically, all I did is I did the job you all paid me to do, and you know, to go out there and do the right thing and take some of these guys off the street that need to be and keep people safe because they deserve to be. And so it's my pleasure to kind of close that chapter in law enforcement and then take on my role here as your Vice Mayor and on your council for the years to come. So I'm looking forward to that, too. So thank you very much.
All right. So now, we have a presentation from our Girl Scouts, and this is Girl Scout Troop 4095. And they are going to go over a presentation that involves the senior center improvements that they have made. It's all yours. Hello.
Okay, that's working. Okay, so this presentation is on our Silver Project, and we chose to do our Senior Center. The issue that we chose to redo was the older section of the Senior Center hadn't been redone in a while. The paint wasn't very well, and the pool room and the domino room needed to be renovated the most, so we asked for those, and we got them. So our goal was creating a better environment for the seniors to recreate. That was our, Warren. That was our project team. This is us. Okay, so we planned for a while, and then we got our project leads. Alyssa, please tell us what your project lead was.
My leadership role in our Take Action project was to orchestrate the open house which displayed the final project. I started by collecting donations, which I used to purchase supplies. Then I created a flyer to invite people to the open house that was being held. After creating the flyer, I emailed or hand-delivered the flyers to people we wanted to invite, such as family, donors, and representatives of the city. Before the open house, I made a list of the food and beverages that were needed for the event. Later, I went to Sam's Club to order and purchase the food for the open house. On the day of the open house, I set up the food table and welcomed guests.
And Natalie?
I...
Can you hear?
Yeah, okay. I was the billiard room lead, and I was in charge of finding donations for paint and things like that. And I had to research artwork that we wanted to put into the rooms, and I had to make a report for approval from the girls in my troop. And after I got approval from them, I had to make a final report for Ms. Jessica at the Senior Center. And once we got her approval for everything, we went and purchased it all, and I got donations for paint from Home Depot and Grange and Co-op, and that was about it, so.
Hannah Tucker?
My lead for the Silver Award was the PowerPoint, and I was taught how to choose good photos for the PowerPoint and to use the PowerPoint software in order to make the PowerPoint. And I was also taught how to take good polls for the girls in our troop so that we could figure out something that worked for everyone.
Rebecca Fernandez?
I was the landscaping director. To accomplish this, I first contacted a Parks and Rec manager and discussed what we were going to do. Then I told the girls the plans for that day. We planted new flowers and put in new bark. I think we did really good. Thank you.
Morgan McIsaac?
My leadership role was being the leader of the game room. I had to research art options, a coffee cart, and all sorts of accessories for the room. I had to measure the rooms to find out how much paint was needed. Then I presented options to our Girl Scout troop, and we debated and made final choices for the design. After the design was approved by the troop, I put together a typed presentation for the approval by the Senior Center. Natalie, who was in charge of the pool room, and I met with Jessica from the Senior Center to discuss whether or not the plans were okay with the seniors. All the plans were approved, and the seniors gave us the paint color choices.
Myself, Michaela McIsaac. My leadership role for the project was being historian. I took pictures of each meeting and workday. I collected photos from others as well and saved them on a flash drive. I worked with Hannah to put together the PowerPoint presentation. I learned how to transfer photos, use PowerPoint software, and the importance of taking a good photo.
Hannah Lacature?
My leadership role was the budget. Over the course of the budget, over the project, I budgeted what we spent, how much money we had, and what donations that we received.
And last but not least, Daisy Beltran.
My role was the crafts. My job was to get some fabric samples to use for two small cork boards and four tablecloths. We also used the fabrics to cover a big cork board that is used for announcements. As a separate job, I made a pencil holder that is covered with dominos. I really enjoyed my leadership role because I got to choose the samples that I thought the other girls wouldn't like. And I also enjoyed that the girls gave me their ideas on crafts I could make.
Okay, so we planned, we discussed issues, developed a timeline, created a budget, chose our fundraiser, and got a list of all of our donors. Our stage two was getting our fundraiser, our garage sale, together, and it worked out really well. Our profit was $800.
Nice.
Our donations...
Mine first.
Our donations were from the city of Yuba City, Home Depot, Grange Co-op, Family Barbers, Sam's Club, Farm Credit West, Evans, Target, and The Frame Shop. And here are all of our proof pictures. Stage three, design and approval of plans. We designed the room renovations, put together plans for the approval, and made to-do lists. And here is our proof that we got them all approved, with Natalie and Morgan and Ms. Jessica. Stage four, landscaping. Rebecca had us get new bark, flowers, and shrubs, and these were all donated from the city of Yuba City. Here are before pictures. Working photos. And here are after pictures. Stage five, inside renovations. Prep and repair. Painting and new decor. All of these took a very long time. Here are before photos. As you can see, they were a little bit roughed up over the course of the years. And during our renovation, we did a base coat of paint, and then the actual paint. And while others were not painting, they did the crafts, which were sewing, making the cork board, doing the presentation, making the budget, putting up cork boards, more painting. And then after, we got all of our furniture, set it all up, got the paintings up, the cork boards, all the other stuff that was there, and we put it all nice and beautiful again. Our project value. Our troop expenditures were $850. Our donations were worth $2,175. The total project value in total was $3,025, and not including labor. We have special thanks to Frank Bender, who helped with painting and decor; Steve Lacature, who helped with the painting; Esmeralda Gazar, who was our budgeting mentor; Pedro Gazar, who was our furniture assembly man; Jessica Chesey, Senior Center staff support; Nick and Eddie, who are our landscaping mentors; Janet Bender and Rose McIsaac, who are our troop leaders.
Yay!
That's it. Thank you so much for having us.
Very good work. If all of you ladies can come on up here. Yeah, that would be good. All right. We have a couple of certificates for each one of you. You guys did such a job well done. That was amazing work. I'm so glad to see you guys in there. I hope you guys will continue to come in there. Brad? Keep him at work. But we have some certificates and some goodies for each one of you. So thank you very much. We have Daisy. You're welcome. Natalie? Rebecca? Alyssa? Welcome. Hannah? Hannah Lacature? You're welcome. Michaela? You're welcome. Morgan? And Hannah Tucker. Welcome. All right. Another applause for these young ladies for job well done. It's going to be a mass exodus. I know. That was beautiful. Great. It was such great work for them. All right. Our next item is a public hearing. We're going to look at accept grant funding and expenditure recommendations for California Citizens Option for Public Safety, COPS, grant for $100,000. We have our chief presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. The purpose of this is to secure additional funding to be used toward the prevention and reduction of crime and violence. Utilize the funds for equipment improvements of frontline equipment. Each year, depending upon the state's budget, funds may be allocated to law enforcement agencies to assist in carrying out priorities as established by the Chief of Police or the Sheriff in unincorporated areas with the contract city. Over the last several years, monies have been made available through the state of California to local law enforcement agencies in the form of the Citizen Option for Public Safety, the COPS grant. The state government code restricts the money to be used for frontline law enforcement purposes and may not be used to supplant any existing law enforcement services provided by the city. Funding directions are based upon the needs from the Department of Management Group in consultation with the rank and file, IT, and other city staff that are directly involved with purchases that we may be making. Last year, the majority of the money from the COPS grant, which was $100,000 also, were utilized to purchase a smart board for training, a drying closet for evidence, night vision optical lights for patrol, and portable cameras that we have staged. We had two of those last year that we staged strategically throughout the city, and they're movable. Prior years expenditures have been for such items as body worn cameras, portable monitoring cameras, complete infrastructure upgrade of the police radio system, total service weapon upgrade for all the officers, equipping all patrol vehicles with mobile data terminals integrated with the police communications center. This year, well, we suggest a continuation this year along this path of technology, evaluation, and implementation, which has served us well for the past 10 years, over the past 10 years. The majority of the money this year, we'd like to place to purchase two new pole cameras for remote monitoring of areas identified as needing extra surveillance, forensic light for crime scene investigation, ballistic helmets for patrol. And the reason we're going to a new ballistic helmet is just because of the dramatic increase that we've seen nationwide about officers whenever they're responding to active shooter situations. Because the most unprotected part of an officer right now happens to be their head, and you'll see a lot of officers now that are wearing ballistic helmets. They'll only be used for that purpose. They're not going to be used for purposes of wearing around, but in strategic areas where there's a possibility of imminent danger. We'd also like to purchase plate carriers for patrol, and that's along the same lines. Currently, we have Level 3 vests. They protect us to certain armament that's used by bad guys essentially to cause harm to us. Our vests can protect against certain rifle rounds, and several years ago, here in Yuba City, we had rounds that would definitely penetrate that. So what we're looking at is a plate carrier that will protect to a much greater level, and that'll go directly over the critical areas of an officer's vest. And those, again, will be used for critical situations. Because of the weight, we don't want our officers to have to wear them all the time. And they don't present a great sight, but you've got to kind of balance public safety with looking good out there or being practical. Also, new SWAT tactical vests. We're going to replace existing vests. Right now, the government has a program where they reimburse the city for 50% of all costs of vests that we use for patrol purposes, but they don't do it for SWAT. And for SWAT, again, we're using SWAT in critical situations where there's probably a firearm that could be present, whether it's a gang member where it's a high-risk search warrant. So we want to make sure that our SWAT officers have the best protection that we can afford them, since we're putting them in the most critical situations. And then some other patrol-related items that are a lot smaller in purchase, but those are the major items that we're looking at. The fiscal impact is $100,000 with no matching funds required. The alternative is to provide staff with alternative spending paths, which will not supplant the routine expenditures in the general fund per the grant requirement. And the recommendation from the department is to conduct a public hearing, and after consideration, adopt a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to accept the fiscal year 2017, 2018, COPS funding and approve expenditure recommendations. Further authorize the Chief Financial Officer to make budget adjustments as necessary. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for chief at this time? Okay, thank you. So I will go ahead and open it to the public. The public hearing to accept grant funding and expenditure recommendations for California Citizens Options for Public Safety Grant for $100,000 is now open. If there are any members who would like to speak in favor or against or have any comments? Nope? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back. And for discussion or motion?
I'd move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the chief to accept the California Citizens Option for Public Safety, COPS, funding and approve expenditure as recommended.
Do we have a second?
I have a second. Excuse me. I'll second that motion.
If you can keep your voice.
My voice is going away, I guess.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion approved.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comments on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to have select representatives to express their opinions. So as far as written requests, members of the public submitting the written request 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes. There were none received. There was none. Okay. And then appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes. We do have a speaker card for Karen Leggett.
And she has done an excellent job. She never says, "Go away." She always takes the time, even though she's really busy, but I do limit my time talking to her. But I wanted to say thank you to her, but she left, so I'll tell her at the Capitol when I go. But number two, I know Sean when he was a CHP captain, and I thank you for your time served. And I also helped get him elected to City Council. I told Yuba City residents how good he was. So I'm glad he's on our City Council and staying on our City Council for a while instead of retiring early. So thank you, Sean, for all that you've done. And I wish the... And I wish the ladies would have stuck around to say thank you, because I am one of the seniors that uses senior center occasionally. So I wanted to say thank you to them. So could you guys let them know as a senior to thank you? And I'm going to make sure I get over there to see what they've done. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Our next item are consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request particular items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar in an individual action. Do we have a motion? Do we want a discussion? Do we want to?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Didball, members of the council. So we ready?
Yes. And this is going to be, this is our general item, Berry School Waterline Extension Project Design Services Awards. Thanks, Benjamin.
All right, so good evening. The item I have before you is regarding to providing water to Berry Elementary School. So, little background information, the school is located at the corner of Berry Road and 99, south of town, about a good couple miles south of town. So it's down there ways. There's approximately 700 students that attend the school, and they've had, they've been plagued with water quality issues over the years. The most major issue is a high arsenic level, and it's basically the EPA has issued them a violation. So over the last five or so plus years, they've been working with the state water board to come up with a game plan on how to resolve that issue. And so they had an initial study where they looked at options on putting treatment on-site, providing drinking water through different means, and the consideration of running a water line down from Yuba City down to the school. And with that, with that proposal, it analyzed all the different options and the cost benefit ratio, and the chosen path was basically the most effective means was to run, extend the water line and consolidate with the city of Yuba City. So in 2015, the city partnered with the school district, Yuba City Unified, to, and got with the water board to look at our options for if this was possible, since it's extending the water out of our sphere and down into Sutter County in such a long line. And in the city, moving forward in good faith with the school district and kind of a win-win for the city and for the school district, we moved forward with a grant application for SRF grant fund funding. And so with that, we've been working through this grant application and environmental processes for the last couple of years. We've been back and forth to council to allow us to put in for the application and then to do some of the environmental work and apply for the grant. So the one last major hurdle for funding is to come, is to finalize the technical documents, which is basically the plan specs and estimates for the design. And with that, the move timely, we, staff went out for a quest for proposals to get a consultant. This fall, we advertised it, and we only have one local firm respond, MHM Engineering. The, so MHM was the one, one engineering firm that basically responded. I think a lot of the, only having one response is because MHM is known to really have, really familiar with this project and hard to compete with. MHM is a local outfit that's been working in that area with the Boge Stewart Master Plan, and also they just did the design for the Berry School. And so they have a lot of the info and really familiar with that site. So I didn't see a lot of competition. However, with the, with their proposal, their rates are, you know, industry standards, and basically the pricing, the way the professional service agreement works is that it's a time material type basis. So this is the not-to-exceed number, but at the same time, they're going to bill us on actual expenses. So some of the stuff in there about utility coordination and some different work, we might not fully utilize. We're going to try to minimize those costs as much as we can. And with that, the costs are considered reimbursable when we get the grant, should we get the grant. So right now, we've been coordinating really close with the school district and with the water board, the state water board, to ensure that, hey, if we're going through this much trouble, we want to make sure we get the money back. And so the grant is reimbursable. They don't upfront it. I spoke to them again today just to confirm where they're at, and they are definitely expressed their interest to get this and move forward, because they're trying to get rid of this EPA violation and make progress on that area. So, so with that, this Mark Button, the new director of facilities with the school, is here to help answer any questions and support of the project, but he could answer any questions about the school in particular. And I'd be happy to answer any more details about it, but basically, our recommendation to finalize this grant application and move forward with the project is to award the design services to MHM Incorporated of Marysville, California for the design and construction services for the Berry School Waterline Extension Project in the amount of $98,528 plus contingency, finding it the best interest of the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council at this time have any questions?
To the mayor.
Yes.
Ben, so the sole purpose of this water line, can you give us the restrictions to the use of the water and everything else? There's got to be some limitations to what this line can be used for?
So definitely. So currently, the sphere of influence, it's up by Boge Road and then zigzags down around the subdivision down to Stewart Road. And so in order to provide water service outside of the sphere, there's LAFCO policy that it has to be for health and safety that meets, for a local, for a public agency such as a school district. We did a similar action when we did the Franklin School Waterline Project back in 2011, 2012, where we technically went outside the sphere, got approval from LAFCO to service water there. And so the water would only be allowed to service that school. And so with that, we would have a looped line that connects up at our current location up on Railroad and Boge, just south of Boge, along Railroad, just south of Boge, around Tuscan, there's a connection point, and then on Stewart at the school there. So we would loop this line, which would have some benefit for the city in providing better water quality and pressure for that southeast quadrant, is where there's a benefit to us. But then also, and then this becomes a private main, private lateral basically down here to the school to service them.
So there are restrictions that in the future, no residences could hook up to this?
Not until the area would come into the sphere of influence and then into the city limits.
So the size of the line that's currently being put in, is it just adequate just to serve the Berry School site is all?
So the line sizes in the, along Railroad and Stewart will be sized for the ultimate design, which is 16 and a 14-inch line. The service line south of Stewart would be a three-inch line or a two-inch line just for their service. There's concerns that we don't want to oversize and have a big, long dead end, because then you run into water quality issues based on the date or the age. So if you have a long line that's that long and it's just used for drinking water and domestic purposes, the age of the water gets old. So it's going to be a smaller service line at that point.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No? Okay. And? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for staff's recommendations.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Okay, our next item, the purchase of the 58 self-contained breathing apparatus, mask, air cylinders, and related charging and maintenance equipment has been removed by staff, and we will bring that one back to the city council for action, the February 6 council meeting. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move forward to business from city council. We'll start with Councilmember Buckland.
Rather uneventful number of meetings that I've had, just one rather significant event, and that was the groundbreaking for the Fifth Street Bridge. And thank you, Mayor, for leading us through that process and getting the dirt turned and that whole process started. The city staff has been remarkable in that process, along with all of our support agencies, to include Caltrans, SECOG, and the federal government. So looking forward to what will happen in the next two years at that site, and certainly being able to keep the citizens of Yuba City up to date on what the construction plans and everything else, what it'll look like as we proceed forward. But certainly a great opportunity for our city. So that's all I have to really report.
All right. Councilmember Cordoza.
Start with community events. Had the great honor of attending Councilman Harris's retirement party, us and council. Was a great fun time. Couldn't ask for any better of a time. Thank you, Sean. It was wonderful. I also attended the board of supervisors meeting, the change into the chair, and social gathering afterwards. Dan Flores is the new chair for Sutter County. He'll do a wonderful 2018, be wonderful at that. I helped serve dinner for the third annual Xmas dinner for the needy at the Yuba City Fairgrounds. The founder of that event is Robin Burr. She's been helping here for the last three years. I was there for the first shift, for the first three hours, and we served over 200 people while I was there. And I don't know how many was left after that. They said, they told me I had to leave. They had another shift coming in. So that was a wonderful time. She gave them clothes, food, and endless food, as much as they wanted. Meetings, I attended the Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority meeting. We had our homeless consortium meeting, planning commission meeting, and also attended LAFCO meeting with the mayor. Chambers events, the council and I, we attended the ribbon cutting for Smart and Final. And we also attended the annual gala awards dinner here Friday night. For city events, we had the polar bear plunge. None of the dignitaries or anybody in the community wanted to do it with me, but we had, that was a wonderful morning. We only had 17 people, though, that actually jumped in the pool. There was a little over 50 people there, so it was a good gathering. We just need more people to jump into the pool. So we'll work on that for next year or the year after that. Also attended the promotion at the PD for Brian Thornton. He's been promoted to sergeant. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Councilmember Cleveland.
Yes, if my voice remains, which surprised me for the last half an hour. Let's see, I was at the mosquito vector meeting this past Thursday. Did want to say that they do provide a service to the community above and beyond just their routine, driving around, making sure the mosquito population is reduced and keep track of what kinds of mosquitoes are here. They will spray for, before large outdoor events for free. So anybody that has a large outdoor event, needs that done, call with plenty of time And you can arrange that with them to keep them pests away. Was at the regional water authority meeting recently, last Thursday also. They mostly did elections and then discussed some of the legislative issues we're going to have to deal with in this next year. Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency meeting was canceled. I am on LAFCO, but this last meeting was in conflict with the mosquito vector, but they fixed that by changing the time that they meet to 3:00 instead of 4:00. So now I will be able to attend both the LAFCO and mosquito vector, which are my assignments. With that, a lot of the same events that everybody mentioned, the promotions, the different things, the launching of the bridge project finally. And congratulations on everybody's efforts over the time of about 20, 25 years to make this happen. With that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. We have Vice Mayor Harris.
Not a lot on my end either. Spent a little bit of time down in Mexico, enjoying the warm weather. But also, like fellow council members, attended the Chamber Gala event at Calusa Casino for a Chamber Commerce. It was a very, always a good time, always a good event, pleasant to be there. Congratulations to all the nominees, of course, the winners and all the hard work they do for our community. The Fifth Street Bridge groundbreaking historic event, I think that was very, very well attended despite the weather. It was, it was very pleasant and kind of a good, a feel-good moment right there. Supervisor Fletcher from Yuba County provided some historical perspective from the goings-on in that very cemetery where we were standing. Particularly interesting, and the hard work that our city folks have taken on. I tell you, that's, I can't even imagine the amount of hours. It's not an eight-to-five job to undertake the lead on that, such a big project. So I appreciate that for the work you've done and will do for that. The, on last Friday, had the opportunity to attend the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. They have a, what they call a champions program, which is, it was tailored to elected officials. There was about 25 of us in the room for a little better than half a day, learning all things economic development. So not just necessarily here locally for our city, but for the entire region. So I got to hear firsthand from some folks who are very well-versed in the topic. I never thought I would listen to somebody talk about that topic with my mouth open, leaning forward, but I tell you what, the way they did it, it was quite interesting, and I appreciated the opportunity to do that. One thing that I wrote down, I took away from that, was they talk about home-growing jobs locally. A lot of folks commute in, a lot of folks commute out for different jobs, but if you, if we create our own jobs for our own people, Yuba City was specifically mentioned as one of the cities who has the highest percentage of folks who, whose jobs we create here locally. I believe it came in about 38%, which is the highest one that they've mentioned. So I think that's something to be proud of, and hopefully we can continue that work. From what I have learned, it really kind of lit a fire under me to become involved with that and do what I can do to the extents appropriate with my, with my parameters to help move us forward as a city. So I appreciate that opportunity to attend that.
Great, thank you. Okay, just want to echo some of the words with the groundbreaking for the Fifth Street Bridge Project. That was a monumental time for our city, long time coming, 20, 25 years. So thank you to all the partnerships that were created to make that happen. Diana, who's sitting back there, and our program manager, Lead Kevin, who is not here, but thank you very much to all of our city staff who have made huge commitments and dedication towards making that happen. So thank you. And I, aside from the craziness of the holidays and having lots of family and friends around, my daughter just left yesterday, so back to a little bit more normal life here. I took up on the opportunity to use some of the time off to take some tours of our levees. I also made a trip out to Beal Air Force Base with Colonel Broadwell, who offered to give me a tour, and looking forward to doing some future work with the Air Force Base. And the only other meeting that I had on my agenda was the LAFCO meeting, and I attended that on behalf of Stan Cleveland. And now that we've got our time situated, he will go ahead and take over on that as the commissioner there. Aside from that, not much else. And unless there's any other comments anybody wants to make, this meeting is now adjourned.